Welcome. So now we come to the agenda as published. We go to agenda item number one. Do we have any apologies for absence? I know of one apology. Georgia?
Chair, sorry, we've had apologies from councillor Sylvia Dunn and councillor Richard Honeyman as well.
Okay, thank you. That's everybody. And then we come to agenda item number two. Disclosure of interest to deal with any disclosure by members of any discloseable pecuniary interests and interests other than pecuniary interests as defined under the Seaford Town Council Code of Conduct and the Localism Act 2011 in relation to matters on this agenda. Now, I want to make a declaration of a non pecuniary interest in agenda item five because I'm a member of the Seaford Baptist Church. Does anyone else want to make any disclosure of pecuniary or non pecuniary interests? Okay, that's that. So we go into item number three. This is an opportunity for public participation. Does our member of the public wish to participate?
Yes, please. Now, go ahead.
Yes, go ahead.
I read the papers last night and I really come because I was so taken aback by the fact that the councils and the committee have to meet after seven of May, not virtually, not face to face either, because you have to be sitting side by side with Covid precautions. I can't, I can't believe, I suppose I shouldn't be shocked really, but I am. The incompetence and disorganisation. And I've got some questions. One is, the first one is, which government department is responsible for this? Shall I read this, the questions?
Yeah, I think if you go through them all together.
Right, okay. Has the, is our MP aware of this situation and has she commented on it? That's the second question. The third question is, is the media aware of this? I realise that it said that the court case may resolve it at the last moment. But I just wonder why, what will eventually cost the taxpayers and the council taxpayers money for the National Association of Local Councils to have to take court action against the government as well as the additional cost for Seaford Town Council. And councillors are not all young. They won't all have had two vaccinations. Some people can't have them for medical reasons. They are not, the vaccinations are not a hundred percent. Some people are still going to get very ill long Covid or die. And surely anybody who has had a friend or relative in those situations must be deeply shocked that the government, it's making a mockery of its own rules because it's on May the seventh, we're not completely out of lockdown. And I'd like to say that I know that the Seaford Town Council is not particularly party political and that's a good thing. But I would like to say that people who are a member of the Conservative Party should think hard about what's happening and how it can be run, things can be run in such a careless way that the government has to be taken to court. I mean, surely it's just common sense that Zoom meetings are much, much better in many ways anyway for people to participate. That was, that was all my questions. So it was, what government department does the MP know? Have the media been told? And any other reactions that you've had?
Okay, thank you. I think that was a very good context for our agenda item number five. But I'll go to our town clerk for a comment and some of these things are clearly beyond the the reach of a town council to change, but we are bound by the law as it stands. Well, I'll refer to Adam now for a a comment, a response to the details of your questions.
Thank you, councillor Rayden, and thank you for your, to participant for your questions. I think that we've been really careful within the report that we've written for, for the item around physical meetings to try and make them as safe as we possibly can. Because I think that I definitely understand where the concerns that are coming from. And we're trying to, we're put in a position, if you like, where we're trying to, on the one hand, make our council meetings legally operable. And as you say, from the seventh of May, councillors can only vote by being physically present in a meeting as things stand at the moment. But on the other hand, taking all the safety measures that we can. And that's why the work's been done around risk assessing possible venues and then seeing which is the safest. And then also any other measures we could be taking to make sure we maximise safety of anyone who's participating within those meetings. So those are the steps we feel able to take. In terms of the specific questions. In terms of, to take our MP as an example, I mean, I know that our MP is aware because actually she, before this announcement was made, we were in the position of not knowing what was, what the situation was going to be. And she actually lobbied the government on the path of not just ourselves, but other people who approached her to try and get a decision from government. So at least we could operate rather than waking up on the sixth of May and discovering, so we can't do virtual meetings anymore, what we're going to do sort of stuff. So, so, so I know that she's very concerned about the issue itself because of the actions she took, she took previously. And the media are aware, but obviously we're not judge, you know, we can't comment perhaps on which particular aspects of government policy they pick up more than others. But as you said, in terms of the judicial review and the court case, maybe when the outcome of that is announced, that might provide an opportunity for maybe a bit more media coverage of this issue than there has been so far. And in relation to that court case itself, we're obviously watching that very carefully. And we'll talk about that when under item, item five of the agenda tonight. But the court case was heard on the 21st of April. The judges have gone off to consider their judgement and they, the expectation they would announce it within a few days. Well, a few days doesn't come soon enough for this meeting, I'm afraid, because they still haven't announced the outcome. But obviously we're watching that incredibly closely to see what would be most sensible going forward. But I think as a council, how we've approached this, as I say, is to see what is the safest way for us to be operate legally from the seventh of May until further on, when hopefully, you know, as long as things go as they're going. At the moment, the roadmap sets out dates when things start to relax further and when physical meetings would become normalised or more possible. So hope that's helpful. Happy for any, you know, anybody else.
May I ask some supplementary questions and some points? I know you've got a lot to get through.
Sorry, it'll have to be very brief. One point, I think.
Just, the Seaford Town Councilers are volunteers. It's very uncaring to be put in this position. You didn't answer the question, do you know which government department is?
You have to go and check that, I'm afraid. Unless one of the other councillors resident knows now. I've got the letter from government, I can look at the top of the letter.
Yeah, right. Well, how many millions of pounds are spent on the civil service? And they can't sort this out? Is it somebody's red box somewhere? You know?
Yeah, so I'm sorry.
Anyway, thank you.
Sorry, we shall have to move on. And the other point I need, I need to make is chair is that we're in an era or part of the calendar called Pirda when there are local elections on. So we have to steer clear of any, any party politics in this kind of setting. But I'm hopeful that if you can stay with us to the end of item, agenda item five, you'll know as much as we do. And you'll see we have a plan being worked up. So thank you for your, your participation tonight. I think there is no other member of the public in, so we'll move on. We move on to agenda item four, and this is the town clerk's update. So I'll pass across to Adam Chuggar, town clerk now.
Thank you very much, Chair. Just to say, as part of the approach I'm taking to the role, which is around transparency and accountability, I'm doing regular town clerk reports. And so even though this is an additional council meeting, I've submitted an additional report to you all till you get that regular updating from me. And as I talked about at the previous meeting, if ever there's too long a gap between council meetings for the reports, we're regular enough, if you like, I'm happy to, I'll be doing additional town clerk reports. It just so happens at this time of year, we met in March, meeting now, meeting in May, meeting in June, that should cover regular reporting. So, but obviously if there's, those gaps later in the year, I may do additional reports. I follow the same format as I followed before, which is to show, which to cover the summary of the work that was presented to you and then provided an update on those items of work and then added any new additional work that's come in since that time. And I'll continue with that structure for six months. And then we might see that some of the original items may start to drop off because, you know, the report might get a bit unwieldy if we do it like that. But at least that gives you again, the transparency about the items. And I just probably just pick up just a few items from the report itself and then I've had to take any questions or comments from councillors. I've covered the work that's going on around climate emergency and rewilding. I've covered there some of the things that we're doing as a council already, such as the work on the golf course, which I talked about at recent town forum. And as I've also said in the report, we're going to bring a report back to full council to cover rewilding that's happened so far. And then ask councillors for their views about what should be our next steps in terms of further rewilding after the initial work has been done. So councillors make decisions about the next stages of that at a future council meeting, to which we'll bring a full council report for you to make that decision. We've talked, I've talked, I've mentioned the work around staycation, we're going to cover that in the town forum. But the report for that actually goes, as it says in the report, to community services, which is this Thursday. So we've got a report about the staycation activities at this Thursday's community services meeting. I've talked about some additional financial controls we're introducing to, to, you know, having, we really want to make sure have with the, after the budget we've set for this year, that we're doing all we can to stick to that budget as far as we possibly can. And all councillors' offices are committed to doing that. And I know we'll be doing that, but we're putting in some more internal measures to help us to see how we're against that and help to appoint that. I've covered the fact that the View has now reopened, which is fantastic. Staff there did a great job. They ran a kiosk temporarily and the team worked together well to have that for takeaways for a short period of time until the View was able to reopen for outdoor catering. But that, that, you know, but that's for, so that's now in place and the View is open and we also, that's open four days a week for the outdoor catering and then three days a week to takeaway bar service also available. So we cover the seven days a week. And there's regular fortnightly reviews of the, of the, of the View, given the Covid restrictions that between, with councillor Brown as the, as the Chair of Gold in the View Committee, myself at the RFO and the View Manager. And we'll be meeting next week for our next fortnight, the review meetings. I also cover a report, the work has been going on to, to enable the asset working group to meet. A lot of work's needed around the feasibility, around study around the different options for some of the sites that we have as a council. But that work's nearly complete now and the asset work group will be convened shortly. And then once they've had their meeting, a report for that group will come back to full council. Those are the ones I wanted to highlight now. Very happy to take any questions or comments. Thank you.
Before we move to questions to Adam, that we've seen there's a possible internet problem. I think technically we could describe it as lumpy. Sometimes Adam's internet is a bit slower than we would. So sometimes let him, let's be sure he gets to the end of the answer before jumping back in because he may be, it may be the internet's paused him momentarily. So just give him just enough time to get to the end of an answer. And the others say that I'm asked, I'll ask Georgia that, tell me keep count of who wants to speak and when. So, okay, we come to questions now about the, from councillors about the town clerk's update report. If you could show your hand and unmute yourself, who wants to go first? Okay, Jane, councillor Meek, followed by councillor Lord, I think.
I just want to say that I'm very grateful for this approach to town clerk's role. And I think it's really helpful for us to get this feedback all the time. So I'd just like to say thank you very much, Adam, for adopting this way forward. And I think it's, it's very good. Thank you.
Okay, I think that's, thank you from all of us. Councillor Lord and then councillor, I think there's a thumbs up from councillor, and councillor Lord, do you want to speak?
Yes, certainly, very quickly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, town clerk. The rewilding, I'd like to be involved with that because we are, my place of employment, we embark on quite a large rewilding project. And it seems so that we have two people doing two different things or two people doing the same things. I'd like to be, place myself an opportunity that I may be able to offer advice or even more importantly, where things have gone wrong. So if we've done something wrong, what I don't want to do is Seaford Town Council replicate what we've done wrong. So if the town clerk would please copy me into anything he's doing with regards to rewilding, I'd absolutely love it. And I can give my advice as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, town clerk.
Thank you, councillor Lord. Anyone else? Councillor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking at this land availability assessment from Lewis District Council and I'm wondering if that's kind of an, have an impact on our neighbourhood plan? And will we subsequently be told what sites we can and cannot build on? Thank you.
I think that was to the town clerk.
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, basically, first of all, as you, as you know, councillor, we're very, it's fantastic to have a labour plan and it's made a massive difference to our work as a council and continues to do so. And continues to be a key point of reference around any aspects to do with planning land use, et cetera. In terms of this Lewis process, they did an initial, initial consultation with us. And as a, as a town council, it was all the towns and parishes of their district about effectively approaches they'd had about potential site developments. Without any decisions being made about whether those sites would be developed or not. It was very clearly sent out as a raw list with no decisions made. The next step is for Lewis District to gather the feedback they've had from the towns and parishes, including ourselves, through our planning and highways committee. We submitted a response and I'm grateful to councillor Warby and Geoff, our planning officer, for their work to make that possible. And all councillors had the opportunity to contribute to that. So we sent the response to Lewis, along with all the other towns and parishes in the Lewis District. The next step for Lewis to consider those responses, do the small review work themselves. And then in the summer, my neighbour will be there, will then do a consultation about sites that may be taken forward. So that list may be quite different from the list that we looked at in January, if you like, because it could well be, quite a lot of things may have come off it before it goes out to more public consultation. And then there'll be opportunities for public to also be back about possible sites. Then after that, they then determine which sites actually go into the next, the next iteration of their local plan going forward. So I hope that's helpful in terms of the steps we're taking and also how we're remaining involved.
Okay, thank you. Another councillor. I think it's a good, good report inasmuch as it's breadth and also the, the range of duties being carried out. So I think we say thank you to the town clerk for the report and we can now move on to the next agenda item if that's, there's no, no one last question to be asked. So we come on now to agenda item five, which was page seven in the report pack. The, I would like to introduce this by complimenting the officers on the amount of work that's clearly gone into this in terms of the thought and the research and the consideration of the range of options. Clearly, this is a, a complex and well, well researched piece of document in front of us tonight. So I think I would like to, what I will ask is that if Adam introduces this, and I think we, it would be a good thing to maybe have that item one as a verbal report. And then perhaps if he would, while doing that, lead us through at least items two to eight. And then I think we'll open up for questions after we've heard all of that. Because if we try this piece by piece, we could well be in a, difficult to stay in touch with what, what's just, just happened. So I think if Adam, you would lead off with item with a recommendation one and then introduce the two to eight, and then we can have a discussion around that.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so that's, that's what I'm going to do, if that's okay. Just so, I'm going to cover one, basically two to eight. And one is, say, to give a verbal update, which is obviously what I'm doing now. And then two, I'm going to cover two to eight now. And then at the end of two to eight, I'm also going to just cover briefly the implications of the court case to item two to eight. So I'll cover two to eight, then I'll cover the court case implications of it. And then at that point, it'd be over to questions to comment and discussion by councillors. And we're going to do, as, as the Chair has indicated, we're going to cover one to eight fully. And then when we finish that, we'll then go on to do item nine, if you like, effectively the last part, which is the our response to government consultation on virtual meetings, to treat them separately effectively. I hope that all makes sense to everybody. So let me just walk you through some of the key points of, of Paul under items two to eight, and then I'll talk briefly about the court case, and then we'll do questions and discussion. That's okay. Let me just find the need. Here we go. Okay. So item two, again, self-explanatory in terms of, we've sent you a comprehensive report to enable you to consider the, the elements of this. And again, our question at the beginning of the meeting, I think, helps with that in terms of considering the important issues contained within it. So we want the councillors, as councillors have every opportunity to discuss and consider the points within this report in the meeting tonight. And that's really what item two is to cover. Item three, as you will see from the report, we've looked at possible venues for physical meetings to take place. We've determined that our own council chair is not Covid safe at the current times for the social distancing that would be required, seems to be safe. And we've considered the view of the Baptist Church. And with the report, you see some, the appendix has some pros and cons, but detail within it. As the report explains, the view would require us obtaining additional IT equipment and may also involve have some complexity around other of that building for some of the meetings that we want to hold. See, for Baptist Church, we could, if effectively, you know, go carry on without needing any additional IT equipment. Although some of the meeting dates will need to change to avoid clashing with any events within the building. And just to say that although it's important to note, obviously, this would be a church building that's hosting the meetings. But we're very clear with Seaford Baptist Church around, if you like, the secular nature of this. That church does host many local secular community meetings. So it is used by the community as a community venue already for what we describe as non-church matter. So that's an important consideration there. So leading on from three, you get to, if we were to go to Seaford Baptist Church, some of the meeting dates will need to be changed as per the detail within the report. Item five and six covers what we do about public participation, you know, with the return to meetings from the seventh of May. And basically what the report is saying is, on the one hand, we'll continue to stream the meetings live so that public can see the meeting live or watch on YouTube at their leisure to make sure they're informed about what the council are discussing, considering. But they will still have an opportunity to participate. But because of the restrictions, we don't think physical participation is, would be appropriate at this stage of the operation. So that will be a matter of the public submitting their questions to the council in advance of a meeting for them to be considered. And again, the detail of that is covered within the report. Obviously, if we were to do that, that means we'd have to amend one of our policies. So that is why you have motion six on the list, one to eight in front of you. Then under item, motion seven, we have a council of physical attendance. And again, I think as I covered in my answer to the question at the beginning of the meeting, we're in a position where we absolutely recognise we want to do everything as possible to keep our councillors as safe as possible and also respect their, their views about their own person's safety. At the same time, the proposed legislation, if you like, or legislation, if it's not amended by the court case, makes it clear that a vote by councillor can only be made in a physical meeting after the seventh of May. Which is why we have no choice really but to hold physical meetings and also have no choice about asking councillors to attend them if they wish to vote. And of course, we don't want to take the right to vote away from any councillors. So that's how we try to approach this in terms of the planning contained within the report. So, and so that we feel we have, if you're not almost no choice but to take that approach to this. We need to make sure that physical meetings are possible, that councillors are able to attend them. The only way that they'll be able to vote on decisions after the seventh of May, unless the court case changes things. And number eight is a suggested health and safety, additional health and safety measure we're suggesting. Because obviously close monitoring of Covid, people's co-position and early knowledge of any co-repositives will, will help to ensure people's, people's safety during this period of additional, of physical meetings, if you like. So I hope that gives you what we call the gist of the motions that we're covering under one to eight and why we sort of group them together in that way. Before, before I take, before we go to questions and discussion, I just wanted to make an additional point about the court case. Basically, we don't know the results of the court case. So therefore we have to, at this meeting, plan on the basis that nothing is going to change and the seventh of May will be when this change comes. And so that's why this report is presented the way that it is. And that's why we have the motions one to eight within the report in front of you. So if a vote tonight for one to eight will be us planning to enact from the seventh of May, because that's the current legislative position. Okay. However, if we, if the court case were to change that, then we might be in a position where the date in which this has to be implemented may not need to be the seventh of May anymore. Okay. So we obviously, we don't know what the results of the court cases are. I'm just saying we might want to plan for both sides of that court case, if that makes sense. And in fact, the court case could have varied, varied outcomes actually. You know, they might say, it might be that they, you know, they, it might be some of the conditions around things might get changed, but or something like that. But in a nutshell, we think the most sensible thing to do would be to put a slight amendment, the additional amendment to these points, one to eight, which would be to delegate to the CCMG council group plus the proper officer the decision when these measures take. So in other words, tonight you could decide to make your plans for the return of physical meetings on the understanding that at this stage, they're coming in from the seventh of May. If the court case changes that, you, you could have some delegated authority lined up so that then the date at which physical meetings start be determined. And then the measure we're talking about tonight will then be enacted at the point at which physical meetings need to start. I hope I explained that reasonably clearly. So when we, before we, before we take the vote on the motions in front of you, it'd be helpful to maybe decide if you want to add some sort of amendment to give a bit of flexibility about the date when this starts, in case the court case makes a change to the situation that we're in.
Okay, thank you. I think we'll, we'll open up.
Very happy to take questions, et cetera. We'll hand that to the Chair to the discussion. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll go to questions. And I think if maybe Georgia, Georgia and Adam could be thinking about a form for the amended amendment that might be, what we may want to see in chat before we actually go to vote on that, on an amendment we've just, just only just learned about. So, Georgia, if you'd help me keep track of who's asking to speak in order. So who would like to respond to Adam's points about items, recommendations, one to eight, and the comment about item recommendation nine? Councillor Olivia, Olivia Honeyman?
Thank you, Chair. I have to, I'm concerned about number eight, about the fact that the legislature, the government is saying at the moment that councillors can only vote if they're actually able to be there in person. Is there no exceptions to that rule? Because some people physically can't be there because doctors might not allow it to them to physically there. Yet they're not going to be allowed to actually vote. So where, where are we with that?
I think that specific question merits an answer because that's, it's a, it's a question of itself. So, Adam.
As far, we've looked at this, all I can say is we've looked at this really carefully. We've read around this. We've been through the gov.uk website more than once, looking for exceptions to the rule. Now, I haven't found any exceptions. If anybody finds some, let us know, you know. But as, as far as we're reading the gov.uk guidance, it's saying there's only those physical persons can vote. If anyone differs with that, please speak up. But that's, that's how we've read the UK.
And unfortunately, there's no provision for proxy votes or ability to carry a vote for someone else. Simply, that's the law as we read it. You have to be in the room to vote and unfair, as though, as though that appears to be. Someone else? Councillor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got two questions actually on point number eight, on the coronavirus lateral flow test. Quite a lot of us have had both of our jabs by now, which provides quite a level of immunity if you follow the reasons in the press. So I'm wondering whether this is actually necessary. My second question is on point four, one of the, of this report. You know, I recommend this report. I think it's been well written and we're taking the right, the right direction to make sure that we can continue with council meetings. However, I do note that if we use a Baptist church with their equipment, which is going to save us some money, and I'm all in favour of saving, my unusual note. There's been two operators present. If we are discussing confidential documents, what would happen with those two operators? Thank you.
I think specific questions I think could be answered. Or attempted to answer them. Somebody said some, some of these things are.
I think in terms, in terms of the, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Yes, go on.
So in terms of lateral flow tests, I mean, I do take your, councillor Brown, I'm not, I wouldn't profess to be an expert on these matters about the timings around vaccination and also the impact of vaccination, which my understanding is most can be about as much someone's ability. and also the impact of vaccination, which my understanding is most can be about as much someone's ability to not develop the infection, but may not take away their ability to infect others potentially. Because I'm not a medical expert, but we're just taking the safest course with that. Because, and also the vaccination is not a hundred percent effective. That's, that's the science. So following the science, the science is saying the vaccination is not a hundred percent effective. So there may be individuals for whom it isn't effective and therefore we need to keep testing just in case such individuals exist within the council group, I think. But at the same time, we have made the test optional. With regard to confidential matters, yeah, we'll, we'll, we, we've, we've obviously had some, George did on this in terms of discussions with Seaford Baptist Church about what our needs are. Now, they're operated, the operators for during the meetings simply to make our lives a lot easier. And obviously then as officers, we can focus upon the, the matter at hand, which is the meeting and not the technology. But we can certainly make sure with the Baptist church that if needed, there is, you know, some contingency plans around what happens if, if, if everyone apart from council staff and officers have to leave the room to make sure there's still continuity around things like filming and stuff like that. So we'll make sure we, it's a very good point and we'll make sure we do cover that in our conversations with Seaford Baptist Church.
Hey, thank you. Someone else? I don't know whether people are a bit shy in taking turns, but I think it's, okay, Councillor Cash.
As you know, Chair, I've been able to attend many meetings over the last nine months or so when we've been Zooming because I've not been well, but I've been able to attend and at least listen and participate as best I can. It does mean that I've been able to represent my ward as I should, should do as a councillor. And this new restriction will mean that I will no longer be able to do that. And I think therefore the decision that they're making is an undemocratic one, as far as I'm concerned. It means I can attend meetings, but I can't vote and I don't see the logic behind that. If I can attend meetings, I can't see why I can't put up my hand and vote, just as I've done in, over the past months when I haven't been well. So I know that in later in the report, you have made those points. But I would like to emphasise that we could, any of us be in the situation that I've been in. And it does mean that you're taking away from councillors in those positions, their democratic right to represent their wards, and I think that's wrong.
Yeah, fully agree with that. And Adam, any comments?
Yeah, I completely hear, completely hear it and, and, you know, it's with a, almost, I suppose, with a, with a heavy heart we, we're pursuing as we are. But as I said, we've thought about all the ways we can maximise participation, but the one thing we can't get around is the, the, the meeting being physical and people present of the ones who vote. And, you know, as I said in the earlier answer, we've looked to see if there are ways around that, but we haven't found any so far, unfortunately. But we would love there to be some.
And let's hope that the, what goes on in the High Court gets a little bit of leeway, if not fully overturned. Councillor Meek.
I, I don't know what the, the, the court case has, has itemised and has concentrated on. But it would seem to me that I, I quite understand that we have to adhere to the law. But it seems to me that the law is being flouted by the democratic process not being followed. So I think we need to think as councillors, are we going to be happy to have meetings where one or more of our councillors is not able to represent their ward and their residents by voting? I think that's an infringement of democracy. And I think, I don't know if we should support that as a, as a body of councillors. I think we would then be supporting something that's actually undemocratic. And I think we need to support our fellow councillor Jean Cash and anybody else who might not be able to attend the meeting and therefore not vote. I think that's totally undemocratic.
Adam?
I, I completely hear what councillor Meek says and of course it's a matter for councillors to determine how they wish to proceed. Obviously as officers, all we've been able to do is present what is legally possible. Or we've got what's possible within our, within the legal guidance under, from, from gov.uk for, for the, for, for how this is working, which is that, as I say, the, the period of time where virtual meetings were allowed in the sense of being able to make legal decisions and have people legally vote within them, is coming to an end on the seventh of May, which means you go back to the position it was before that, those regulations. Effectively, some regulations were introduced to make it possible and they run out on the seventh of May and they haven't been renewed, which means you return to the previous position, which is you have to be present at a meeting to be able to vote in it. And so that's the law as it stands. As officers, all we can do is rise on that being the law and then councillors must, will have to make a decision on how they wish to proceed.
And I think councillor Meek, one of the, the real complications for us is that this part of the municipal diary, the first meeting that would be affected by this, if we're going to say that councillors would choose not to be part of it by apologising, boycotting, whatever, is that meeting, is the annual meeting, at which point committee chairs, representatives, representatives to external bodies, committees, all these things would not get done. So I think it's just, it's, for us, it's happening to us, it's impacting at the most difficult time of the municipal year. But I'm fully, I fully understand what, what, what you're saying. But I think the problem is how we could, could continue to run as a council, were we not, you know, to be not, yeah, we, we use our freedoms to not to go along with it, but then we don't end up with a functioning council because of the time of year we're in. Did I see somebody have a hand up? Georgia next and then Councillor Cash.
Sorry, I just thought I'd jump in because councillor Meek, you asked about what exactly the High Court is looking at. And it's actually, I think it's quite an interesting point because I believe they're focusing on how you interpret some of the wording in the Local Government Act. So they're looking at how you interpret phrases like being present at meetings and having access to meetings. So that, depending on what they find there, it could mean that a councillor can be present at a meeting virtually or that a member of public can access a meeting virtually. But as it stands, there is nothing in law that defines those specific terms. So that's what the High Court is trying to achieve.
So there's hopefully some legal sensible leeway in there. Councillor Cash. No? Okay. Anyone else want to speak? Councillor Rutland.
I should say, I actually completely agree with councillor Meek that, you know, it is a very valid point. And councillor Cash would still be meeting it virtually. But obviously I completely understand the position for not being there personally in the current circumstances with the problems she's got with the health at the moment. So just to say, if it needs seconding, I would second it, but I agree completely.
And also I think in, in the, the answers to the survey, the, the appendix, Seaford Town councillors proved quite conclusively, we can meet virtually and do the job well, without anything being adversely impacted. We, we've proven, in fact, we've won two awards in the last year on the basis we can do it virtually. So it's a little irritating to be told we have to stop doing that. But then again, so anybody else want to ask a question before we start to go through these recommendations on a voting basis? Councillor Meek?
Sorry, I, I, I might have missed this, but I wondered if officers, I presume you have, looked at the, the difference between paying £2,700 for nine meetings at the Baptist church as opposed to, you know, investing in some, some of the equipment that might be necessary for a meeting we could have running it ourselves. I do take into account all the other things like officer training and having officers being able to do that. I just was interested to know what the difference in costs might be. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm happy to, I'm happy to cover this. Thank you. It's a great question. So basically, we've, if we went to the view, we would need additional equipment for that to be, for all the things we need to do in the council to be possible. And we've got a quote for initially, this stage, if you like, getting the necessary professional support and equipment there for the meetings concerned. We're still looking at the details of it because it only came through this morning, but it's a higher cost than the quote from the Seaford Baptist church. So I couldn't give you an exact number yet because I need to check it more thoroughly because it's only literally just come in. What I noticed was it would cost more than the Seaford Baptist church option. And obviously when we know that, so I guess what we're saying is that the, the Seaford Baptist is our interim option, if you like, that we're suggesting tonight effectively, having established it doesn't cost more than, was reasonably expensive compared to others. And I guess the obvious view would be that cost 2,700 is reasonable in the context of what's been asked, been to do under these interarrangements. But we will be meeting as a council again on the 24th of June. And by then, things may be clearer about what we describe as long-term arrangements. And I think that would be the meeting where we may, where we may want to determine our longer term arrangements. And that might be where we might consider maybe getting in additional equipment and stuff like that and how we might potentially possibly manage those meetings ourselves. But we wanted to make sure the council could legally function from the seventh of May for this interim period. And that's why we're going down the route of the Seaford Baptist church. Thank you.
Okay. Do we want to see, we talked, Adam talked about an amendment to the resolution, to the recommendations as earlier in the, earlier in the presentation. Do you want to see the amendment in writing? Because presumably we'll have to take the amendment and then take the resolution. So would you like to see what the amendment might be? Yes. So do we have some text or Adam, do you want to compose something that Georgia might then?
Georgia, have you got, have you got the text to go in the chat?
Okay.
Here we go.
It's in the chat now.
It's in the chat.
So this is a proposed amendment to go before these recommendations. In the event that the current court case results in a change to the date when physical meetings are required, the council gives delegated authority to the town clerk and the councillors, who are members of the CCMG, to determine an alternative date for the changes in this motion to take effect. I think the delegated authority would be to the clerk as proper officer as well as him being town clerk. So does anyone have any questions about the motion as put? Councillor Borman?
Yeah. Can I just ask quickly, obviously if there are changes, would we have cancellation fees with the Baptist church for the, obviously if we've booked these meetings already? Can I just ask that, please?
Adam?
That's, I think it would probably depend, to be honest with you, how close to the meeting date the changes would come through. As the first meeting we're proposing is the 20th of May, which is two weeks after the seventh of May. We're obviously hoping that this court case gives us enough, enough notice with the Baptist church to be able to discuss amendments with them. So I can't give an absolute answer, but I think, you know, we would obviously, given there's a whole programme meeting there, we'd look to talk to the church about making changes, but the court case should hopefully come through in time for enough notice to be present.
Okay, anyone else? No, I don't see anybody else asking to speak. So I think the, well, the process should be then, we put, we look for someone to propose and second this amendment. And then following that, we can go back to the, the, the nine recommendations. Content to do that. Councillor Honeyman, Richard, oh, sorry, people voting are proposing at this stage. Councillor Honeyman, I saw, Olivia Honeyman, I saw first.
I was just going to ask a question, might have missed the moment. Is there any way we can write a letter to anyone we can ask about the issue that we've got, where we've got members who can't physically be here? Is there anything else we can, who, who can we write to? NELC or anyone further up the line that we can actually write to about the problem that we've got with some councillors? And I'm sure we're not the only councillor who've got these issues who can't physically be present. Or do we wait till after the High Court, wait to see what that outcome is and then decide who we write to?
Adam?
Yes, I mean, obviously we're already committing to respond to the government consultation on virtual meetings and that's item nine of this report, if you like. But yeah, very happy to take our, we have been work, we've been part of Salk meetings and Salk discussions about these processes and part of the, you know, any collective response going on there. But again, we can certainly raise this matter individually with the MP and also with the, presumably the relevant, the person who wrote us the letter, I think we had to do this for, for that, that, that government department, we can write to them as well.
Councillor Warregan, I saw you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was going to propose that amendment. But, you know, I have agree, you know, agree with everything what everybody has said. And, and I think to, you know, like councillor Olivia Honeyman has said, to, you know, make a response to somebody because, you know, we've had this, this system in for over a year now and it's worked extremely well. And we've, you know, we've managed as a council, we've had public participation. And, and I, you know, going back to, you know, like the Baptist church, I don't see that the public is going to be able to participate as easily as they do now. Unless I've misread that, but, you know, and this is what it's about. Our, our meetings are so open with the public that they should be able to, you know, attend our meetings, make comments in the public participation as easy as possible. And I feel that we, you know, we should carry on as we know, we, we are going and until we can meet properly with the public as well. Not half and half.
I think, and that is the feedback to make in this letter to whoever we're going to write it to, say that we are perfectly able to carry on as we are now. There's no need on us to change. And there are disadvantages for some of our councillors across and across many councils, the same kind of disadvantages. People who are, who are shielding, people who've got long-term or short-term health problems. Yes, but let's, let's come on to the resolution then. So we've got councillor Warregan saying that she will propose it. Someone second this, the amendment, sorry, councillor Rutland, councillor Rutland seconding it. So those in favour of the resolution, of the amendment that's now in the chat, those in favour, please show. Anyone, okay, thank you. Anyone against?
Everybody.
That was everybody. Okay, thank you. So we now move, we can now come into the chat. That, we now come back to the actual recommendations of the report itself. So in terms of, I think I need to ask the question, do you want to take them all in one piece or do you want to go through them one by one? Suggestions, please.
I think it's a hazard unless anybody feels not to.
I propose we take them all in block.
Okay, I think that, that will ease the process and I think these are things that are unpalatable, though some of them are. They are necessary. I agree, we could take them on block. If we were to go through them one by one, I would abstain from item three, but on block, I'll vote. So we've got a proposal, we take them on block. So would someone like to, to, so propose it's on block? Is councillor Argent, you're seconding that?
I second that.
So we're taking.
Yes, I second that.
So we're taking recommendations one to nine on block. And I think that councillor Brown, the proposal is that we accept these recommendations on block. That's correct, yes. Okay, that's proposed and seconded, so let's go to vote on that. Those in favour of accepting them all on block. And I think that's everybody. Anybody saying nay? Anybody abstaining? That's, sorry, councillor Everton, you have, I think she's maybe frozen. I think she's got a permanent. Couldn't work with permanent yes or abstention. Don't know. Anyway, this is a substantial majority and these recommendations one to nine with the, with that amendment are carried on block. So that brings us to the end of our meeting. So thank you for attending. And clearly we have some, I think those of you, us who pray, it's probably time to pray we get the right results through the, through the, through the, through the judicial review and that we will be able to move ahead in a way that it keeps everyone, all of us engaged in the process and keeps the town engaged as well. So thank you for your time. I will now call this meeting to its close. Thank you. Good night, everyone.